Reading proficiency findings, this is kind of what I talked about, the gap between the white students to Wilmer Senior High School. Oh, last one. Special ed performance significantly below the state average. We also have a couple special ed programs within our high school that qualify as high school students that some other schools don't. We'd really like to delineate the data a little further, but the reality is that they're Wilmer Senior High School students too. And they're going to come into our data and that's just the way it's going to be. Okay, reading comprehension. There it is. Kathy flipped to the next graph. To me, this is the one that, you know, this is kind of a cleaner way to look at it. It's a little more evident. And then literature strand. One thing, you know, when you look at literature and this, I've drawn conclusions over these little sample sizes again. We've seen a little decrease in the proficiency in our literature standings, you know, over the course of our whole group, but we've actually seen a little growth in our comprehension. And I would suggest that has to do with our focus on nonfiction reading. The focus on nonfiction has, it's really been a focus at the high school and I think it probably has been at the schools younger than us as the kids have come up. And has our literature proficiency suffered? I don't know, but that will be some of the things that we'll look at in our standards. And then the last one, vocabulary, it's the biggest challenge. If I went to Somalia and started going to high school, the last strand that I would have proficiency in would be vocabulary. The richness of vocabulary that students have growing up, that is just always going to be a challenge for our EL population and that's representative in this. But we don't have an excuse for all of our kids. We need to get better. Okay, math proficiency. Before we get into the math proficiency data, I'm just, this is interesting. We only have two years to work with. So we have two years of math data for the MCA test. And I just want to have you look at, I'm gonna try to make this one not sound like we're just making, the last one, I think I was explaining data. This one's gonna sound more like excuses, but I apologize. Okay. If you look at the state average, the state average in math proficiency dropped about 6%. The state average or the average, the proficiency at Wilmer Senior High School, of course, it's different sample sizes, but the state's a big enough sample size. That's pretty significant. At the high school, it dropped about 11%. With our Hispanic population, we went from 25.6% proficiency to 4.5% proficiency. Now, how can that possibly be? And my argument here is, how could the state actually go down? We've been cranking up proficiency. The standards have never been more rigorous. Schools across the state are streamlining proficiency directly towards those math standards, but yet the state proficiency in math has gone down. How can that be? The kids have figured out the test doesn't come. The kids have figured out, they know they don't have to pass the test in order to graduate. So, I'll make that statement as maybe a matter of fact than an excuse. The reality is, we still need to get better at having the kids engage in the test and their learning and proficiency. And I think we do when it comes to the standards and it comes to our classes, but it doesn't seem like that's transferring to math proficiency, at least with the test.
It will a year from now though.
Yes, potentially it will. And I hesitate because there are reports coming out of the state. I've met with legislators over spring break. There's a huge push to reevaluate the math test and so regardless of that though, we're going to move forward with this. No matter what we do with the school improvement plan, we need to be better at teaching math. And regardless of what it looks like in two years, whether it's the same or whether it's different, there's going to be a major component of math proficiency in any state plan. Whether or not the test is going to be high stakes, the state is really looking at the idea that less than 50% of the students in the state are proficient in math. Are they really prepared to tell 50% of the kids in the state they can't graduate? 80% of the Hispanic students in the state of Minnesota are not proficient in math. Are they really prepared to say 80% of the Hispanic kids in the state of Minnesota are not going to graduate in high school?
Right. But you also just mentioned in the previous sentence that since it isn't high stakes, we're wasting a lot of time looking at this data because they're not taking it seriously.
Right. That's why we're not gonna spend a lot of time on math. We're not gonna draw a lot of conclusions. We do need to do a better job of integrating math standards across our curriculum. I think we do a pretty good job of intentionally targeting these standards within our math department. And hopefully someday we'll have data to be able to help us demonstrate how we're doing. And common course assessments is where we need to go. If this, if this doesn't have validity in our minds or the board mind, in the board's mind, we need to do, we need to create some common course assessments and have those consistent year to year and make that happen. That'd be one potential possibility.
So how do you feel about having every student take the ACT? There's discussion legislative.
Yeah, that's the proposal that's out there right now. You know, one of the reasons why I really liked it, and it wouldn't just be the ACT. The kids take an ACT standardized test called Explore in eighth grade and Plan in 10th grade. And it's all predictive to ACT. It's the same company, it's the same test, it's the eighth grade version and the 10th grade version. And what they're talking about doing is using this to help set goals for the kids as they make decisions based upon career, two-year or four-year. And if students aren't going to pursue a four-year track of high proficiency, this math test is off the charts when it comes to any sort of math test. It's not a basic skills math test at all. But what they're talking about is the potential of exemptions to this if students pursue a career track related to either CTE or agriculture or yet to be defined career track based education. Of course, we're hearing the word tracking, which has been out of vogue for a while, was very popular for a while, but that's coming, potentially coming back. It's being talked about. And so as we've kind of watched these new proposals and everybody's got ideas, whether this stays or not, we feel pretty comfortable that we're going to be very well positioned as a school with the programming that we have to be able to respond to whatever it is the state says it's going to be. If they do go, the Explore Plan and ACT Track, I think that would be fantastic. I would love to be able to have kids in a normed test, the same test, eight, 10, 11, and we can get ahold of that data. And if the state can then align the lower tests to that, those same initiatives in all those different categories, that breaks down communications very well. There's a science component to it. It's very comprehensive and it's nationally normed and that would be wonderful.
There are school districts though, that do not rely and weigh as heavily on the MCA data. We just happen to be labeled as a priority in a focused school. And they are using those tests because that's what their district and board has adopted as most important to the district over the MCA test. So there are districts out there thinking exactly what you're talking about.
If our math department was able to choose how they would like to be judged, and if it comes to that, I would doubt that MCA3s would be on the top of their list for that evaluative model.
But are you continuing to have that conversation as what we should be doing as a district in addition to the MCA's? Or is it something we want to wait until the legislature rules and mandates?
Yeah, I think it's going to play itself out here in the next two months.
If it does not?
If it does not, then that's where we'll be. This isn't, if it doesn't go away, it doesn't go away and that will be how we're judged. Because the state models will necessitate it. We recognize that. Okay, I'm gonna zip kind of through the rest of this. I've talked a long time. How long have I talked? How many, what's my minute count?
We've got about four minutes left.
Shoot, okay.
Take as much as you need.
Uh, let's see here.
Strategies.
Go to, go to.
Paul.
I know, I hear you.
Your point.
Thank you. Go to the.
Proficiency goals.
Yeah, math proficiency findings.
Here's reading. We did those.
Yeah, we did those. Oh, so the, through this plan, what all the schools did, all the buildings did within our district is they created then goals to reach based upon a set standard that Cheryl kind of walked us through. And I really like the reading proficiency goals. I think that is what we would like to adopt and we need to, we need to use those. And I just have a quick narrative on that. Let me find it. Okay, reading proficiency findings. You want to go to the findings section?
It was reading.
No, no, no. You can go past that. We'll go past that.
Let's break you through the reading test.
Yeah, jump through. Yeah, reading proficiency goals. Okay, um, oh, yeah. All right. So now, I do have one more important thing to talk about. I don't know how much you know about the reading test. It's, this is kind of going to be difficult to maybe understand or, and/or believe. Okay. So here's our reading proficiency findings and here's our reading goals. We have been told by the state to be careful about doing any sort of comparison between last year's results and this year's results. And here's why. The reading test has been renormed for some schools and not renormed for others. It's been renormed to something called the Common Core Curriculum. And we've gone through it as a leadership group. We got the pre-tests from the state. We talked about it in our leadership meeting. We've talked about it extensively in our communications department. And let me see how I, now the MCA, now it's the MCA3. The MCA3 is geared towards the Common Core Curriculum rather than what we would traditionally think of as a reading test. The test is now basically a referendum on the communication standards as opposed to, can you literally translate a document and pull knowledge from that document? What we think of as a reading test. It really is a referendum on these standards. And if I, we talked about bringing the first sample question here, you wouldn't believe it. So now, why would schools be different? We were asked to either sign up for the online test or spend one more year doing paper pencil and then go online the following year. But we thought, let's just go online. As long as that's the way that it's going to be, let's go online. Well, the online test is the new MCA3 test. We found that out after we signed up for it. The paper pencil test is still going to be the MCA2 test. And I think reading was maybe thought of as okay by some legislators. And now as this is coming out, it shouldn't be called a reading test. It should be, it should be called a communication standards test. Because it's, the new normed test is totally different and I don't know. I don't really know what else to say about it other than if our scores go down, they even said, be prepared to give the kids an hour to two hours longer to take the test because it's going to be more intense. So we took one of our accelerated communications 10 classes and ran them through the online test the day the window opened. Actually, the day the window opened, it was a snowstorm. So the first day when there wasn't a snowstorm, when the window was open. And it was a little bit longer and we kind of did exit interviews with the kids and, you know, I don't know, we didn't get much from what they thought about it because they didn't have anything to compare it to. They haven't taken it before. So we are in a wait and see pattern with this reading test. We're, I'm, we're going to be very careful about drawing any conclusions when we see our results. We want to see how our results compare, our growth, gain or loss compares to state averages, gains or lost. And the state needs to figure this out and give us some, some clear direction as to where this is going, so.
So Paul, are you hearing then from the state that they're going to hold districts harmless then?
I'm not.
For their results?
Yeah.
It certainly does not make any sense to me that you're taking a test online without the knowledge it's gonna be a different test. And half the districts in the state's gonna be judged by one standard and another half's gonna be judged by the other. Seems to me like 2013 should be a year the state of Minnesota says, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna look at the reading scores as a penalty against the districts.
Right, but I could be mistaken, but I believe that's exactly what they did with math in our elementary schools and we were held accountable.
They renormed the math tests a few years ago.
Right. And it also switched from paper to electronic. And I had a lot of feedback from the children saying, we can no longer go back. Because sometimes you solve a problem and then you go to the next problem and you're like, oh, wait a minute. I remember how to do that one now and they want to go back. And once you do electronic, you only can go back three screens. You can't go all the way back like you can on a paper test. And even in elementary, students figured that out. Therefore, I'd have to leave me believe that. High school students could really figure out how detrimental it is to do it online and be limited by how many screens you can go back to.
And they had a tutorial for our counselors to go through to show them how to do it. And now they start the first half an hour, they have a tutorial for the kids and they show them and they've improved those functions. But it's still, when you spend so much of your time through elementary, writing out problems and doing that, and now it's all electronic. I don't know. So the other thing about this online reading test, we thought, well, okay, so one of the reasons why we wanted online is, well, maybe now we can get the data quicker because we wait so long. And that's when we found out, well, since we're renorming it, we need to wait till everybody in the state's done so we can get the data and compile it. And we're still going to, for this first year, we're still gonna roll it out on the same timelines. So that was one of the biggest motivations we had to like, let's go online, let's get that stuff right away and find out where we're at. And so, anyway.
And you said the online version is taking an hour to two hours longer than what the written version was before?
Yes.
I mean, imagine sitting in front of a computer screen for a couple of extra hours taking it. I mean, how could you not lose focus?
Middle school did three days of testing for their reading test last week. They, they were allowed three days to do their reading test. And that was for six, right? I know because my daughter did it.
It's an hour, an hour to two hours longer, taking away from instructional time because we should be, because we now we have to take a test that we really can teach to.
Well, and they would argue, and so the.
Makes a ton of sense.
The other side of that is, that's what the standards are. So now when you look at the ninth grade standards and the 10th grade standards, this test is now a referendum on those standards. And so they've given us the standards, but it's not, so it's a standards-based test rather than what we think of as a reading test.
But I did research on the social studies standards that were just released. It is so arbitrary. And I think our social study teachers were here and kind of shared their philosophy and comments about the changes to social studies. And so, the reason why we keep reinforcing ourselves to make sure everything works well with MCA continues to concern me when we have the student abilities such as you mentioned are ACT. And so I hope we can walk both ways.
We could, we could talk a long time about standards, social studies standards especially. Social studies standards lend them to political influence, unlike math and science. Well, science can too. But yeah, the social studies standards ended up kind of a little bit. All right. Boy, I hope nobody from the state, don't put this on, don't put this on YouTube.
If they don't know it, they should.
Okay, so, the reality for us is, we just spend a lot of time talking about uncontrollables. And we're spending our time with our leadership group. We're not allowed to talk about that. We don't want to. We want to try to focus on controllables. So our reading goals, we need to do a better job of being accountably consistent. And this means a lot and I'm gonna gloss over it. Just because I can talk for a long time about that and I want to, I want to be fairly quick. Go down all the way to understanding cultural barriers. Yeah, just leave them all up there. Go, oops. With the second bullet on the reading goals, what we really feel like we need to do a better job of, we need to do a better job of understanding the barriers our subgroups have in learning to read. We had an initiative when, for instance, Somalis first came to the district eight, nine years ago, where we had in services and training and taught staff about differences in cultures. We, not only do we need to do that again, but we need to learn about how to teach students of a second language, get better at science. There are vocabulary building strategies, the strategies across disciplines where we can do a better job and increase that. And that was kind of what we were thinking about. School-wide training and reading strategies. And then implementation of common reading strategies across all disciplines. We need to do a better job of that and that's the point of emphasis. Accountably consistent. We are going to roll out by this time, by beginning of next year, a new staff handbook, not just with policies, for a third party, but a workable staff handbook with all the procedures of how everything works at Wilmer Senior High School. So when you're a new student or a new teacher, how does the NC process work? We kind of tell them and we have worksheets and we're going to put all of that, it's going to be on the iPad of every new staff member. And it's, and it's going to be, we have 45 bullets on it already. And we think if we do that and we can improve attendance and approve the administration of policies, procedures, discipline philosophies and all those sorts of things, everything improves when you do, when you do those sorts of things right. That's what I mean by accountably consistent. It's a very funny sounding phrase, but there's going to be hundreds of hours behind that with our leadership team that we're very excited about starting, and we've started that already. We'll roll that out a little bit later. Math proficiency goals, skip to the, yeah, the math goals. How about bullet number two? We need to figure our way to inspire students to care about and want to improve the math proficiency. I don't know if Cheryl would like that. It's a little, it's a little fuzzy, but especially when it comes to taking the test. I don't know. That's a goal that we have. We need to do a better job of that.
So how are you gonna measure that?
That would be, that would be through, at the, at the grade level, it would be through course completion. And at the test level, if the test is aligned to those standards, then our kids need to do a better job at it. And then the last bullet, school-wide integration of math concepts. Okay, across all disciplines. I'll get into that in a little bit. Almost done. Okay, so now potential strategies. This is a big list. I'm gonna try to zip through just some of the high points. I want to go back to the mentorship model with new teachers. Emphasize that better than it is at the high school right now. If you're a new teacher in Spanish, have a mentor teacher working directly with that teacher and rather just kind of leave it up. If you have any questions, here's your mentor. But make it intentional with, with bullets and exactly what they're supposed to do. As we develop the CSIP, now we'll be able to gear all staff development directly towards it. Common assessments we're on the way with. Modification of requirements to advance in grade level. We've started this process. We want students to be able to advance in grade level at the high school based upon proficiency. And you get to 10th grade when you realistically are three years from graduation, based upon your skills. And we've started that. There's the staff handbook. So increased access to informational nights for all, to all families. We do a very good job of presenting information to, I think, students and parents at Wilmer Senior High School. I don't think we do a very good job of reaching out across cultural barriers and in making them feel inviting, invited. We like, you know, get here if you can. And we need to be much more intentional with engaging our families with the complex world that is Wilmer Senior High School. It's, it can be an intimidating place and we need to, we need to do a better job of making people feel welcome. Implementation of the teacher evaluation model. I need to do a better job at that. We really like it. This year, I concentrated on the non-tenured teachers. I need to get the assistant principals some training in maximizing their time with the teacher evaluation model. Then within that, one of our long-term goals is to figure out a system within that model of peer evaluations. I don't know if evaluations is exactly the right word, but I don't want to talk about restructured school day. We'll get into that later. That'll be months down the road. We have all sorts of creative ideas for, for that. I don't want to get into that discussion right now. The most exciting thing on this whole list to me is an intervention plan that we've been working on. I've been, I've been throwing around ideas for months and now they're actually coming to fruition. Just put all three of them on there Kathy. ALC school within a school. I'm hoping in my next board report, I roll out a plan for what that will look like. We're talking about in changing what we're doing on a meta-level, improving our teaching. We have a micro-level improvement that we're going to be rolling out where we take individual kids who are not having success and, and targeting exactly where their needs are on an individual level that the ALC is able to do, but bring that to the high school. And have a hybrid model within our school, combining the best of Wilmer Senior High and the best of the ALC and have those students continue to access the career and technical and other classes that we have offered at the ALC. And we'll be rolling out, we're nearly done with developing that vision and we're going to roll that out here in about a month. Newcomer school within a school. It's always been a, it's been a dream of ours to have a really innovative program. We feel like we have one, but we think we can take it even further. That is, we've started a partnership already with a group in the community for newcomers, 18 to 26-year-old, 26-year-olds, where they're accessing job site. It's through goodwill grants. They're accessing onsite stuff and I'm starting to lose you, so I'm gonna move quickly through this. Using data identifier mediation. Okay, roadblocks. Last one. The collaboration time is going to be the biggest roadblock that we have at Wilmer Senior High School. And zip through all four of those other dashes. Our school and cultural, our school culture initiative and safety initiative. We have an open concept for visiting Wilmer Senior High School if you're a student. You can walk in our door at 6:00. Kathy had a student in her room at 6:05 today, working on math. We had students that were lifting weights by 6:15. We had a sports practice. The music department is filled with ensembles and singing groups by, before 7:00, there's kids. There's kids all over our school at all times. I think one of the strengths that we have with our staff is their ability and willingness to work with kids. If you've had a student go through Wilmer Senior High School, whether they're accelerated or needed remediation, the school day isn't 8:00 to 2:30. You know how long your kids are at school and how early some of your kids get to school. Not only with all the activities they do, but the ability of our teachers to give extra time to remediate. We have students two hours a day, every day after school if they're behind grade level, working with our SMART club and then with all the extracurricular activities. The thing that I feel best about possibly in our school is the very thing that's going to be in conflict with this collaborative time that we necessarily need. And that's all, and when I say our school, our safety initiative, besides all of our kids being active and all around, if you walk into our gym at 7:20 in the morning, we have the gym staffed with teachers. And there's, there'll be 50 kids shooting baskets because that's when they get to school. They get to school, they go to the gym. They transfer from the gym and then they meet their 200 friends in the cafeteria and they grab a breakfast. We have our cafeteria staffed with adults at 7:15. So we have a lot to work through at the high school. As we build these goals and we work in this time, that is going to be a roadblock that we're going to need to break through. This is all in reference to the collaborative time that we need to make our improvement plan work. Then as far as the PLCs, the power of the PLCs, a couple of differences at the high school is, everybody, the vast majority of teachers already teach their own standards that are graduation required. And if we necessarily focus on math and reading, the social studies teachers have a whole bunch of standards that they're supposed to get through and inputs and outputs and we're doing all sorts of great things. And that's going to be a challenge. And then a reality check for lots of us, me included. If I'm a social studies teacher or a Spanish teacher and we start developing strategies to help teach math across the curriculum, that math test is highly specialized and technical. And a lot of our teachers don't feel competent to be able to do any good. I mean, if you have students at the high school and you've tried to help them with your math, once they get past Algebra I, it's, might as well be Chinese.
High school, drive middle school. You forget a lot of what they're trying to learn.
So, wow, sorry. That was, was that just like 20 minutes? Was that how?
You don't get to talk in front of the board now for a second.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
The one thing that caught my eye as you were going through some of those ELL.
Yeah.
And we talked about ELL coordinator and getting our whole district in an ELL plan, which you're, what I'm hearing you saying is, that needs to be a further push in our part.
Yes.
The other, a couple times you said, I think, I think, I think in the vertical alignment with some of that, what the high school's dealing with, I hope that we continue to have those conversations with the E through eighth grade principals and teachers and saying that this curriculum, we need to continue this way as well as what the elementary has done a great job this year as horizontal. Continue that vertical conversation.
And I can speak to that point. Cheryl has, using our curriculum bi-cycle, she's begun that vertical integration. Right now it's in science where they're having a conversation, E12, as they're using the bi-cycle to do that very thing. The problem with that is it's, it's on a cycle and it's not regular, but it still is and it still is, you know.
It's the only way to do it.
Yeah.
It's the only way we have to do it.
Right.
I mean, I thank all of our administration and our teachers and all faculty for continuing that model, I guess is what you want to say, because we need it. Questions for Paul? Questions for Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted, yeah, great job, Paul. But it highlights for me how important it is because as I look at our kids that are coming out of priority and focus schools, that we have to, as administration and this board, we've got to come up with some plans and stuff for the middle school as those fourth, fifth, and I think the first batch of sixth graders are already in there. And then eventually, you know, we have to keep that all in line because then they're coming to your building. And we can't just say, oh, we did a great job for them at, you know, look what we did for them in the elementary school, and then we dump them into the middle school and we don't do anything. And if that would happen, you know what I mean? We have to keep that on the front burner, that we've got to follow these kids. Well, as we talked about it, they're E through 12. So.
One of the things I'd like to mention is, as he went through this, did you see lots of things that will tie into our strategic plan?
Yep.
That he will be able to collect data that, just so you have, that's how it will all come together. He will write goals and objectives and data points, collect data that relate to the five things they're going to improve tonight that deal with his building.
The only thing that I would ask is when you do that, for example, on one of the first grades, you talked about common assessments. And you alluded to, we've been kind of working on this for three years. It would be nice to see on some of those things where there can be a timeframe attached to it.
Right.
Saying my goal, we've been working on common assessments for three years, we've got to get it done. At what point will you say, we have a common assessment goal across the math department or whatever it may be? It'd be nice to have some of those.
Yeah, math is there, but we're not there with every department. But I agree with you that that's...
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have no public comments for non-adjunct items, but I do, I read sometimes these things with caution because we have a lot of things to tell a positive story on. But in light of what Paul showed us, I wanted a couple of success stories. Mr. Miley forwarded to me from the middle school. Last Friday, Francis Winter completed the, he's an eighth grader, Minnesota State Geography Contest, and was a state runner-up. The top 101 students for the state competed by taking a written test, winning competition around the state level of the top 10, and then finally around with the top two. So we have one of our own that was number two in the state in a geography contest. At the same time, in St. Cloud, there was a state math test last Thursday. We had 27th graders compete, and we finished 12 out of 31 schools. Our eighth graders had 19 students compete and finished second out of 36 schools. With that, we had a kid that took first and a kid that took fourth. Number of participants in that eighth grade math contest was 818. So we do have success stories that we need to be aware of at the same time. On to donations, acknowledgement of gifts and donations. Donation of $500 from Dion Warren to the Wimmer High School Baseball Activity Fund. A donation of $1,850 from the Wimmer Blue Line Club to the Wimmer High School Boys Hockey for volunteer coaches and the Fall Hockey Clinic in Duluth. Donation of $20 from Glenn and Peggy Wilson for the Wimmer High School Boys Basketball Activity Fund. $300 from Kennewick County Corn Growers for the Wimmer High School High Mileage Program. And a donation of an iPad valued at $500 from Julie Peeper to the middle school. Committee reports were enclosed your packet. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
No.
We are adjourned.